Yeah, good idea. Thanks. Did just want to note that next week, who's out of town, out of pocket, not able to be here because we're trying to figure out if we're going to have the meeting or not. Spring break, so we knew we'd be down a little bit. Okay, so we still have five. So I think Lauren and staff will decide based on if there's anything else on the agenda right now. It's a consent agenda and the approval of the weed management plan, which is pretty quick. But Lauren and I were talking this morning about trying to avoid what we had last month, last week where it went till 10 o'clock. All those little things tend to add up. So maybe we can touch base on Thursday, but if nothing else is added to the agenda, I'd probably say, cancel it, push the weed management plan. It's usually very straightforward and then consent agenda is usually very straightforward. But if anything else comes up that we can get out of the way and give some time to, we do have enough people.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel like the evil are saying something about liking the idea of being in COVID.
I think that's going to end up getting pushed to April 22nd, and I'm not sure if weed management can get pushed a whole month. Because we can't, we can't do the V caps on April 8th. It's just too much there.
Yeah, there's a few different things and there's clear work plan and there's a geothermal update. And in my mind, it'd be great to have this one big meeting where we do all that environmental stuff, but it sounds like it's not going to.
Right, plus building code adoption.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, just that.
Well, we'll keep working on it. With that, let's go ahead and get started. Chief Goodman. Oh, yeah.
Can I just make that comment? I'm sorry, Rob. If anybody is going to be out of the country and needs access to their email, please let Anna know ASAP. Because otherwise you will not have access to your email unless we do that specially.
And you just need to email Anna and tell her what countries you're going to and dates. Is that right? Okay. 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 Anything else for the general order here? All right, Chief Goodman, thanks so much for being here. Why don't you start with introductions? I'm not sure that everybody knows each other, but we've got our names here, but make sure everybody knows who you are.
I'm Rob Goodman, I'm the chief of the protection business. I've been with Carbondale since the early eighties. Started as a volunteer and, and then got hired in the nineties and I've been the chief since January of 2018. Raised my family here and got kids and grandkids now, so. Right there on the right is Mike Wagner. He's our deputy chief, runs the operations at the fire district. Brandon Dieter, he's our training division chief and has a massive job in the training division and also coordinating with CMC and Roanoke High School and our partnerships there with Supa and the degree programs, so. Carbondale Fire District, just in case you don't know, you probably do. We're a special district like school districts. We cover about 300 square miles over the top of McClure Pass, including Marble, down to Crystal, Redstone, up to basically Elgabelle, the Eagle County line, and then Missouri Heights, Spring Valley, CMC Spring Valley, and back down basically to FedEx with all of West Bank and, and back here. We have five stations. One here in Carbondale, one in Redstone, one in Marble, one on Missouri Heights, and then one right at the CMC turnoff off of Highway 82. And we're a combination fire district, meaning a combination career and volunteers. When I joined, there was a chief and a bunch of volunteers. And when I got hired, there was a chief and me and a bunch of volunteers. And so it's changed now. Just like everything else, we grow. We have two stations that are staffed 24/7 with responders. The Carbondale station, of course, we have four responders 24/7 and then the, the West End station, what we call, call it the West End, down by the CMC turnoff, we have two on 24/7. And then a mix of volunteers and career staff everywhere else. That's kind of our bio. Just make sure everybody understands the, a lot of people don't. They think we're just Carbondale or just this. The other thing that people don't realize is we run the ambulance service as well. We run four paramedic level ambulances, transport to Valley View Hospital. So when somebody calls 911, it's, it's us. So we've been, we've been talking for, I don't know, over a year for a while. And it, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about wildfire, about how, how would we manage a bad wildfire if it came into town? You know, we have a, we live in wildfire country. There's a long history around here of it. And, you know, beginning with Storm King in 94, I was on that fire. Coal seam in 2002 burned almost 30 homes and we evacuated almost all of Glenwood Springs. It was a tough couple of days. I was the operations chief on that fire. Lake Christine was the operations chief on that fire. Grizzly Creek, couple of Panorama fires and any number. So it's hit all around us. One day it will be our turn. It's just the way it is. I'm really grateful it hasn't been our turn. I, we like rolling into other chiefs' fire districts and saying, how can we help you with your fire? We really like it. I don't like it when it's the other way around, but we should be prepared for it. And, and a fire in Carbondale and affecting Carbondale is going to affect not only the fire district, but the town in dramatic ways. And so one of the first things to do, and I'm really glad you invited us here, is really talk on this level about how do we act together? What, what is your role when an incident like this is, is rolling out? What is not your role? What is my, our role and what is not our role? The police department, big role. Your, your town departments, streets, public works, all that, big roles. Right? But other things we shouldn't be doing and these things get really complex and really intense very quickly is what happens. And it's crazy because we're the locals, right? And we do on fires what we call initial attack, right? We, we're the first ones out and this fire is doing this. And how many of you are around for Christine? Everybody just about, yeah. Well, you saw after a few days, the big incident management team show up and, and then all the resources and all that. Well, the fire started the evening of July 3rd and us locals went, we were there. It blew up during the day on the 4th and burned through that and into the morning of the 5th. And about midday on the 5th, that type two team, which was in, pre-staged in Loveland, which was great because it would have taken them another day or two to get there, took over on the 5th. So we had 40 hours straight of it being ours. And you call mutual aid, all your people, you still don't have enough. You, you just don't. And it's funny, when a big management team shows up, we used to call them type one and type two teams. Now they've changed it to what they call complex incident management teams. CIMTs. And, and they got rid of the, the types. When you call one of them in, just the management team that shows up is between 56 and 60 people. That's not one firefighter. That's not one engine. That's not, that is the management team to manage the command, the operations, the planning, the logistics and finance. Right? They all take over a school or whatever, and then all the resources come in, the engines, the airplanes, the people. I think we had 650 people on that fire, right? Firefighters. To manage all that, you need 60 people, right? Well, when you're the locals, we throw together what we call an ad hoc type three team, smaller team. And we all, we've done it a number of times, but the reality is there might be, I don't know, eight or 10 of us, maybe, being that those managers, right? Because that's all you got. You're trying to put firefighters in the field and this is called an expanding incident. And it's crazy because this thing is getting wildly out of control. And you understand, if you have any experience, we are not, we're not going to get a hold of this. We're screwed, for lack of a better term. And you do what's called a complexity analysis while all this is going on and you order that incident management team, all the while while you're ordering all your neighbors and in-state resources and aircraft and doing your best. And I'll use Christine for an example. I made a real big mistake. On the night of the 3rd, we went up to the shooting range where the fire started and we could see that it was getting out of control and that we'd have to deal with it overnight and into the morning. So put the crews up there to kind of shepherd it, make sure the flanks were okay and structures were protected down in Aspen Junction on the other side. And we said, well, we can't run this from the hood of a pickup truck anymore. So let's go to the Elgabelle station, me and Scott Thompson, the chief and several others. And so it's midnight and we're trying to figure out who's the management team for tomorrow. And two of their best ops people for wildfires were on vacation, right? And I didn't want to do, I've done them and it's hard and it just, I didn't want to do it. And I was sitting there and I'm telling you this story because I was a moron. I thought it was, I, I still regret it. We're sitting there at midnight and Scott's, well, I'll be the incident commander. And, and the operations section, did, do you guys do any of that ICS online stuff? So you know a little bit, operations runs the fire, the incident. They got a logistics and, and we were sitting there and there was one other kind of newer deputy chief, but he was from Chicago, never done really. He was a great chief, but not wild. And we're sitting in there and Scott goes, well, we need somebody for ops tomorrow. And they're all looking around. I'm looking around, no. And finally Scott looks, I said, okay, I'll do it. And they said, great. And these words came out of my mouth. I looked at Jenny Cutright, she was our PIL, our, our admin chief. I looked at her and said, how bad can it be? And so we worked through the night and the next morning we did our recon flight and I could see, oh, it's, if the wind blows, you know, the 20, 25 up valley like it always does in the summer, we're probably not going to catch this. We landed, sure enough it did. And we'd been ordering resources and, but it, it takes a long time. They're coming from the front range and, you know, they're driving. And that thing blew up and started running to assault and we evacuated during the day 2,300 buildings. It was insane and getting crazy. And we ordered the type two team and, and all that. That night, that was on the 4th, right? About nine o'clock that night, a good chunk of the type two team showed up and you do what's called an in-brief. And this was after a day of running ragged, just problem after problem after problem. We in-brief them and we're getting ready to put everything to bed, right? Who are we going to leave out for structure protection and find, who are we going to bed down so they're fresh and, and all that? And it was about 10 o'clock and a guy that was working for me, I had sent him out. He was another chief, really good firefighter. I said, go take another lap, make sure we got all the structured stuff we need, people, and come back and tell me. Okay. So I'm working in there, making sure we got accountability, I know where people are. And he comes walking in the doors about five minutes to 10. And I'll never forget it. And I said, hey Doug, how is it? He goes, well, there's 200 foot flames. They're headed this way and I think we've got about 25 minutes. And I went, what? Because that, it had been burning up valley all day. And this microburst thing happened, was crazy. And he goes, you need to come outside. And I walked outside and I looked, we were looking from the Elgabelle station over the trailer park to the hillside. And I remember looking up and going, thinking, my first thought was, those are 200 foot flames? And, and for one of the few times in my life, my next thought was, I don't know what to do. And I have a lot of experience. And, you know, that was about two seconds. You go, I can't not know what to do, blah, blah, blah. Okay. And so we rallied and, and nobody's sleeping tonight, get them all. And did this crazy rush into that trailer park and evacuation. We never evacuated it because they didn't need it. So there was no pre-warning, no nothing. So we had police, fire roaring into that mobile home park. People running out for their lives, women running out with an iron in their hand. People running with, I mean, you just grab, in that moment, you, you don't, it's not a rational thing. Nobody got hurt and we ended up making the decision to do that burnout and thank God it worked. And then we kept fighting. But that happened all through the night. It burned up the hill and I went home about 8:30 the next morning. And you're toast, just toast. And our people were, that's how these, the reason I tell you this long-winded story is that's how this happens. And it's that intense for that long. And you're making rapid fire decisions all the time. And people are wanting to help. People are asking for information, all those things. That's where we come in. We have to make sure that as an organ, as a two governments, right, two agencies, maybe three, if it's a county, all part of this management group. We have to make sure that our, the town's priorities are, hey, this is a priority for the town. You got to make sure that's incorporated, that they're thoughtful, that it's not 20 miles long, but that it's right. The fire district, here's ours. Okay, incident commander, here they are. You go write your objectives. That's the first thing an incident commander does. Takes the, takes stock of the incident, takes direction from the board, from my bosses, here's the priorities and you go get along and you write out your incident objectives, half a dozen of them. And then that starts rolling. Mike, your operations, we need XYZ. They start figuring out how to fight the fire, do all that. Knowing that this is probably going to get out of control, that we're going to be here for days. We are not going to get our arms around it today. And in our scenario, and I'll show you here in a bit, we're going to have to evacuate pretty much all of Carbondale. Because it's going to blow through a good portion of it if we don't stop it. And it's a crapshoot, whether you're able to stop it or not. We have to be in alignment and we all have to, it's, it's crazy. I've told our people, we have meetings and different trainings. And so when, when the really bad thing happens, people call 911 and they, they expect the pros from Dover to show up. And guess what? It's us. You ever think, we're the pros from Dover? That's a humbling, kind of spooky thing sometimes, but we are. So we have to be the ones that just throttle it down. We are, we are going to work together. We're gonna keep our natural drive to damn it, this, that. We're going to listen and we're going to agree on things, even if it's not exactly what I would do, so that the messaging and the actions are consistent and clear to the public who we're trying to get out of harm's way. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it's a hard thing to do. So I applaud you for the first of, I hope, a couple of trainings with you. Really do. All right, I'm going to hand out a couple of things. These are just the handouts.
Yeah, maybe give us an overview, chief, of like, kind of what do we hope to get out of the night? It sounds like, you know, we won't go through every single thing. I, I want to watch our clock and make sure we're not here all night, which we could be if we start asking a million questions and, and all that. So what do you feel like is our main objective tonight? In my mind, it's that we know if there's a ma- major wildfire in Carbondale, what our roles are, what plans are in place. And we have maybe start to identify, are there other things that we need to do to be better prepared? But that may not be exactly what, what your objectives are.
I think that's, that's right on. And I'm going to, I have a presentation with a bunch of, you know, slides and I'll probably blow by some of them and because I, you, most of you did, or hopefully all of you did that ICS stuff. So you have, I don't have to re-explain some of that stuff. But the focus is what do the executives, that's you. This is, there's a title for this training. It's a formal eight hour, 10 hour training. It's called ICS for Executives, Incident Command System for Executives. And it's about, it's just an overview of the larger incident command system, right? When you did your I-100 or M-700, it talks about groups and common terminology and all that. Well, the level, you need to understand that to understand kind of how this is working. But you also need to understand that we're the incident management team, but there's an emergency operations center with the county that's probably, an EOC that's probably going to be, they're going to stand it up because we need resources. And they have what are called ESF functions. Emergency section functions, right? ESF can, it's transportation, another one's hazmat, whatever. They can get school buses, Raptor buses, they can help assist what's happening, what we request. They're not running it, but they can help us a lot. Then there's the state MAC. And it's a, there's all these acronyms, but the state system, if this is bad enough, will unfold and we'll be able to communicate with them, right? And get resources and help. Understanding that those are kind of how this thing unfolds is important for you because there's going to be briefings and meetings as the days and hours go on that you're going to want to know about and hear from. And you're going to want to understand, oh, this is the county EOC. This is state stuff. So, because it can be really confusing. So, some of that. And then also, where do you fit again in that ICS structure, right? And, and it's, it's pretty simple, where you fit.
Great. Do you need to get on the Zoom if you want to present?
I need to show my screen. Thank you.
Is there anything else just from the board while chief's getting his screen up that you were really hoping to get out of tonight? Other than kind of general overview, what our role is. And I think it's, there's some comfort level of knowing we have some plans in place and we have good teams in place. You know, when you see these things in the news and stuff, it always feels like there, it's not enough planning that can ever be done, but I think it'll help us to understand. And I think we get questions occasionally. You know, whenever there's a big fire in the news, we'll, we'll get questions about, if that happened here, where would we evacuate? And I think helping us understand, I think there's not a clean answer to that, but I think going through this will help us understand and just be able to respond to the community and also understanding that it's not actually the town government's role to lead in any of this. It's, it's really these guys and, and fitting us in, so.
Yeah, we all have roles to play depending on what incident it is, right? And we, if there was a big water tank breach or whatever, you guys would be running it and we'd be helping you, right? I mean, it's just, depends on what it is. You know, Lauren and Kirk have been doing some very good work and working on the evacuation plan. And I know evacuation's a big deal. It has been really since Lahaina, right? I mean, that's really raised everybody's radar. And, and so we've worked together on that and even have like evacuation zones and stuff like that for the town and different areas. And we'll, and we'll show you that. I think, I think a tabletop exercise probably in May, you think, would be a good idea, right? Do this, maybe one other, just kind of hash it out session with you guys, more of a, not me just blathering, teaching something, but talking about and answering questions and where do I fit? We can do a short thing and then between now and, you know, second week of May. And then do a tabletop with the department heads, right? Tomorrow we're teaching ICS to your department heads. And where do you fit and how does this work? And then all of us gather and do kind of a mock tabletop for an hour or two and just see how, and stress this system a bit and then see, hey, well, this works good, this doesn't, that can, that is, I think those three things are step one in being prepared here. There's a whole lot of other stuff. There's mitigation, there's all this other stuff to, and planning, but we're not going to skin that thing tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so. Get that all the way up. Why won't it go big? That photo right there is Lake Christine on the evening. If you look down here, that's Whole Foods down at the bottom. Somebody took that and gave it to us. So we're gonna, this is a one phase of our scenario. Where did it go? There we go. A wildfire that starts, we'll go back just, or forward just one. All right. So a wildfire that starts kind of on West Mesa, Holgate Mesa, lightning strike or something. July, it's windy, winds out of the west, southwest. Blowing into town, it's July, it's been dry. This is a real scenario, potential, one that has kept me up at night. Right? So this will be our scenario. And what's going to happen is the fire is going to get bigger and bigger. And as you can see right there, it's come to the edge of RVR and Crystal Village and it's starting to spot into the subdivisions, which is how you get an urban conflagration, which you've seen at the marshal fire LA, Lahaina. Okay, that's our scenario. We're not going to go through all that tonight. I just want you, as we're learning this other stuff, this is where we're headed. How do we deal with this? So another little comparison. This was done in 2013 after the Waldo Canyon fire. Do you guys remember that down by Colorado Springs? Fire, it was one of the first mega fire type urban conflagrations that has happened. It was probably the first real one in our state. And it was kind of 2012, that timeframe was really the era of the start of mega fires in Colorado. So here's a neighborhood. That's Waldo Canyon neighborhood, Waldo Canyon neighborhood. There's another neighborhood, does that look familiar?
Is that RVR?
Another neighborhood, looks kind of like Waldo Canyon. Another neighborhood. Billy Gavatt, our former deputy chief and fire marshal, did a study on Waldo Canyon and put this together in 2013. I didn't make this up for tonight. They are all very similar. That's Waldo Canyon that night. Come on. Why is this? There we go. That's Waldo Canyon subdivision. That's same street. I'm sorry, this is not rolling the way I wanted to roll. Okay, yep. That street. Before, after. Before, this is really interesting. After. See that house? That's the same house. Before, after. Why didn't that one burn? I don't know. That's Battle of Mesa, 99. We ran that fire. It, it burned about 20 homes as well. Just jumps from the grass into the houses. They go. I'm not trying to get weird or do, I'm just trying to tell you that this is the world we live in now. We've all seen it on the news and I don't ever want to sugarcoat stuff and have anyone say, why didn't that darn fire chief tell us? Okay, so we're going to go to a little bit of ICS for executives. So we'll talk a little bit about the role of the executive, the incident command system. You guys know most of that. You guys know most of that, responsibilities and stuff like that. So. Objectives and go through those. As you know, all kinds of things can use the incident command system, incident management system, any incident. The other thing we use it for a lot are special events. We get big special events, we run it like an incident. Our open house, other things works great. You can divvy up the workload, span of control works great. And if you guys ever have some big town event that you think, hey, maybe we could utilize that, we would love to come, help you lay it out. We'd even help you, uh, uh, you know, run that thing, right? We wouldn't run it, but we'd say, hey, uh, you got really capable people. I'm just saying, it works really good for all kinds of things. Um, as you know, in I C S, common terminology, right? That's a big deal. You're going to hear operations section chief, you're going to hear division supervisor, group supervisor. You hear branch director, every one of them has a specific designation so that you can tell where it lands in the system. It takes a while to get used to it. An incident action plan. Every incident has to have one. We, we have an incident action plan on every call we go on. Most of the time, they're not written, they're verbal. But what it does is it establishes command, who is the incident commander? Where is the commander, uh, command post located? What is the size up? And what is the communication form we're using? What is the radio channels? What is, is it, whatever? Because when these things get weird and you haven't declared a bunch of that, you don't remember. And you're ordering the world and guess what happens? The world shows up and they don't know which channel to talk to you on. You didn't tell the dispatch center. So we do that as by rote. So that when we're staring at the scary thing, it just comes out. Larger or complex incidents, you really need a written incident action plan. Okay. So for you executives, issues of concern for you. What are the implications of this incident to the town and to me? Right? Be thinking about that. We're evacuating, hey, we need to evacuate from River Road to one thirty-three. I come blowing in and say that. That's a mouthful, right? And that's going to have a direct effect on you individually and the town. So we really have to start thinking in those terms. How do I maintain control when this happens? And that's a two-pronged thing, right? How do I maintain control of what's going on? How do I maintain control of me? We all have to deal with it. I used to tell my incident commanders when they, they get on a bad car wreck or a fire, I could always tell if they were nervous because they key the mic and the first word out of their mouth would be, uh, right? Because you got all this stuff. I learned a long time ago that when I'm doing that, turn around and don't face it. Think about what you're needing, don't look at it. And it helps you maintain control of yourself. And then where do I fit, right? Where does the executive fit and where does the executive group fit in this incident organization on this particular incident? Those are key things for you. Here's what you provide the incident commander, policy, mission, direction and authority. If, if something like this happens and we have a unified command, right? County Carbondale, Carbondale Fire District, and let's say the sheriff's office, unified command, yep. You don't want three incident commanders. I, I, I don't. Some people say you do that, I disagree. Everybody agrees there, okay, this is the person that's the incident commander. And we're going to delegate authority to them after giving, hey, understand our policies, our missions, our direction and our concerns, right? We'll write them down. These are the things we need you to maintain and try to achieve. Then we delegate authority. This can happen really quickly. You guys know, every one of you, you, you're experienced. You get in something like this, you know what's important to the town, you know what's important to you. We can figure out those, those values and those things fairly quickly. These, these meetings are ten minutes. If need, and they, you know, they can be that short. They're very intense, but it's not all day. So executives, they're typically not at the incident. Right? Now, depending on the incident, sometimes they run off the hood of a truck. Other times, we're going to make this the command post, right? And in this fire, we're going to have to make the command post somewhere. I'm not sure this is the best place, but knowing the fire, I'm not even sure our firehouse is the best place. You got to figure that out. I've been kicked out of incident command posts a couple of times on fires. It's no fun. When you have to abandon and go somewhere else, right in the middle of it. But, so you have to figure that out. So they're generally not at the incident, but in contact with the liaison, right? You saw there's an incident commander and they have command staff and general staff. So we'll get to that a little bit. The execu- you, you operate from maybe your offices or the E O C where all of the executives might gather to give their input. So the E O C can funnel it all to the incident commander. Or a big M A C group, multi-agency coordinating group, which is what we would form. So it would be however it rolls out and we decide is most efficient for that incident. Okay, so you guys know this, command, operations, planning. Command has the overall responsibility, sets the objectives and priorities based on what you tell them. Operations, they get the engines and the airplanes and all that, fight the fire. Planning, they develop a plan for the next operational period, right? While all this is happening, uh, plans and operations are working together to say, okay, our plan is till six o'clock tomorrow morning. What, we need another plan at six, right? Because we're ordering resources all day. What's the next twelve hour period? And that's how the planning cycle works, it just keeps going. And so those are three, you really have to have those on any incident. Command, operations and plans, especially if you're moving toward multiple operational periods, right? And then logistics, really important. An army runs on its belly, right? So do firefighters. You feed and water a bunch of firefighters, they'll do almost anything for about twenty-four hours. They'll do whatever you tell them, yeah. And then finance and administration, that's a biggie. This is going to cost big money. And it's going to cost the town, it's going to cost us, it's going to cost the county, it's going to cost the moron that started it, if that's a moron, or if it's a lightning strike, who knows what it is? This is all got to be hashed out. So you set up on a, on a large incident like this, you set up a finance division, tracking time, tracking firefighters' times, street, uh, streets, water department, police, tracking their time. Because in the end, there's going to be either cost sharing or billing to someone. And so you start tracking it. And that's where you guys can be really helpful to your administrator, right? Having those talks, what are we willing to eat? What are we not? Having those talks ahead of time, really important. It's not really running the fire, but that is a really essential function for executives to do, even in the midst of it. Because it's coming. Does that make sense? All right, um, this is just a little org chart potential I C S, uh, uh, elements. And again, it's operations, plans, logistics. Uh, and let me get, there we go. That's where I wanted to go. So there's an incident commander and their command staff. And like I said, there's command staff and general staff. So an incident commander has a command staff. And there are three different positions. One is the information officer. They report directly to the incident commander. That's why they're command staff. They don't need to go through every division and, and all that. They take the message you guys want. Here's what we need, here's what we want to be sent. Here's, this is a message from the town at this time today, right? And you guys work with Lauren and our P I O, Public Information Officer, we craft the message and we send it out. And here's where it's being sent out, right? And so you all are tied into that. You know generally what the messaging is going to be from the town. And then you also know what vehicles are we using to transmit it? Facebook, what, you know, whatever it is, uh, ReachWell, all those things, right? So that you understand, because your phones are going to be blowing up, aren't they? How do I get, what do I, what's going on? You guys need to be singing from the same sheet of music. Hey, incident info, ReachWell, Facebook, our Facebook page, Carbondale Fire, because it'll all be the same message, right? If we start getting crossways on messaging, we can kill people. Really important to be disciplined in this, really important, because it's hard enough. Imagine trying to do all the notifications and getting, I don't know, three thousand people out of there within forty-five minutes. It's hard on the best day. And this is not the best day when there's amber showers going in, dropping in on you and it's smoky. Everything's just orange, people are disoriented, even though they live there. I've been in those, you're just, you're like, oh, whoa, the world's ending. It doesn't look like the same place it did two hours ago. So that messaging and, and message discipline is vital, okay?
Could you tell us, Chief, what is the main communication like platform that you guys would use in an incident like this? Is it ReachWell or is it Facebook or is it something else?
Yes.
Good. I thought you were saying you use one primary platform. You're just saying it's the same message, but it could go out in a lot of different places.
One message.
Okay.
And whatever we have decided are the effective platforms. ReachWell, Facebook, Anna, any others you think of? Your face, the city, towns, Facebook page, ours, county.
Same thing, Facebook, ReachWell app, any way that we can get to everyone.
Yep.
And we would send it out through all our platforms that we've been working on, but for fire, I think it's mostly you.
Yeah, and we do send these infos and as press releases to the Post Independent, the Aspen, to all them. So it can pop up on their digital stuff relatively quickly. It depends on who's working, right? They, they do generally blast out there, right? But we have targeted ones, really our Facebook page, ReachWell, maybe even, what's the other Garfield County? Everbridge, thank you. And Pickin Alert, it would be going out through those as well. That's, and I'll, I'll tell you one thing that's really happening right now. Anna and the Town of Carbondale are working with Jenny Cutright, our admin chief. And they are putting together a plan and a program where together we are going to have our own ReachWell channel, which is huge. People can subscribe to it. ReachWell is great because you just click, I want updates from that. It's in your language and they collect no data, no personal data. And you can turn it on and off at any time. And we're going to have together a common ReachWell channel and we're going to broadcast that. So we get as many people signed up as we can so that when the bad day happens, hopefully we're ahead. We, we keep trying to come up with these ideas and, and put these things in place ahead of time. But that would be the main ones.
Right, I, I'm just, I, I get what I was looking for is what you gave me is some sense that we don't have to get together on the bad day and decide what platform to use.
No.
And, and I like the idea that we're working together as organizations to get people signed up. Like I don't think I'm signed up on the Carbondale ReachWell right now. I get picking alerts through one thing and I get Garfield alerts somehow just direct to text message. But it, it'd be good for us to put in a concerted effort, even in the spring to like, let's all get on this. Let's all get ready for something and let's start using it in lower level situations. So that when a high level situation comes, we're ready. And everybody's not trying to figure it out and download it and find their password.
That's exactly it, Ben, and that's where Anna and Jenny have been coming from. We're gonna, we're gonna have our channel by middle of April and we're going to start rolling out ev- everything just to get people's attention, right? The lower level stuff and, and then advising them in that when the big thing happens, you know, we're your channel. So that's exactly it, I like it. Any other questions about that? I'll tell you, messaging and message discipline is vital. It truly is. It is confusing enough than to have mixed messages. And I've been involved in it over the years, you know, you screw it up, saying one thing, that's another, you go, oh, no. Didn't mean that. It just, it can happen easily. Okay, um, next. To be a incident safety officer. And they're important. They look at this incident action plan, they look at the terrain, the conditions, all that, and they're trained. And they, they put out safety messages, they ensure best practices throughout whatever divisions, groups is going on. And they are the incident safety officer, they can shut down any operation. They have direct authority from the incident commander. That's why they're part of command staff. They better have a darn good reason, but they have that authority to do that, to keep from killing people. That's why it's such a high level position. And then here's another one that's important, the liaison officer. Because after we do that, that initial get-together, you give us your priorities, your, your values, all that, we put into our objectives. How do you get back for updates? Hey, I want to go back to the command post and see whatever. Well, liaison officer. That liaison, they get your phone number, they keep you updated, right? And if you say, hey, um, I don't know, for whatever reason, they may say, hey, three o'clock, we'd like you guys here. We'll talk about X, right? And you work through liaison, so that incident commander's phone isn't blowing up with everyone trying to get a hold of them. Really important position, all right? And then we have, so that was the command staff, then you have general staff. And that was the stuff we were talking about, an operations section, running the fire, planning, logistics, finance, right? And they all report to the incident commander along with that command staff. And those are really the only ones that report to the incident commander directly. And it's important because there's a concept you probably know of, span of control, right? It's an old business concept, says one person can effectively manage three to seven people. Six probably being optimum. You start getting past that and you're not doing a good job. Span of control in I C S is huge. So incident commander just talks to them. But talking through that, through branches, groups, divisions and all that, you can run a thousand people. All under that six span of control. That's the beauty of I C S, it's modular, you can expand it, shrink it, all right? Go through that. Here we go. We've been talking about unified command. That's two or more agencies share jurisdictional responsibility. That's this incident, right? We're the fire department, it's a fire in our fire district, you're the town, the fire's in the town. It's us kittens, that's it. We may call in someone else, you know, it keeps referring back to the county or something. If that fire started in Pickin or Garfield and is blowing into town, I sure as heck want them here. I want the sheriff here or their representative to go, hey, the moron or the lightning strike started there in the county. This is technically your fire until it reaches in here, right? We all have shared jurisdictional responsibility. And when it comes time for getting resources and then paying for them, we'll be glad we did that, right? So we pay attention to where fire. So we pay attention to where fires start, exactly where they start. Ownership. One co-located incident command post, really important. I've seen fires where they had two or three. West Command, East Command. Gary. Doesn't work well. Consensus on one set of incident objectives. And I know I keep going back to that, but it's important in a unified command that the executives set, here are, here are our concerns, here are our values, here is what we need. Then the fire department does the same thing and the sheriff's office. Combine that into one set of objectives. Really important because they drive everything we do. Keep the fire west of Highway 133. That is an objective. They don't have to be complex. Keep the fire from burning Main Street. Right? Burning our core, right? That's a, those are clear, simple, but really important objectives, right? Those are just examples. One incident action plan, and that's kind of self-evident. And the I A P incident action plan is implemented by operations because that's what it all goes to. This little slide you can run, it just shows you can run three different incidents from one command post. That's true if you have enough people and enough stuff. That's called an area command. There you go, area command. You can have multiple incidents and have an area command. I remember after Storm King, it happened like, I don't know, I can't remember, it was Thursday or something like that. And it blew up and it was horrible. And the big type one team finally came in and they were managing, you know, the fire and doing the investigation and we're all trying to get back to normal. And I'll never forget it, the Monday after, there was, we called it Black Monday. It's in our history books here. There was a supercell that came through and it started, and it started at like about eight, eight o'clock in the evening, just before dark in July. Supercell that came on and it hit Spring Valley and here it was raining and it started 13 fires from Spring Valley C M C to the salt. Some of them two acres, one of them almost 200, 13 fires. And we were all, you know, just still trying to recover from Storm King. And then we're out, you know, us, Basalt, everybody. Cool thing was had an incident management team. We went help and they went, okay, we're declaring an area command. All of a sudden we got smoke jumpers and firefighters and airplanes and all that helped us out for a couple of days. Black Monday. Most people don't know that story. That's area command. Emergency Operations Center. Are you guys familiar with those? We have one. We don't roll it out very often in Garfield County, but every county has the ability to open an emergency operations center if needed. Multiple incidents, this big bad thing. And like I said, they have a bunch of different, I should have brought the E S F stuff. Maybe I'll do it. I'll send it to you guys just so you can see it and understand. Because each emergency service function from the county, like I said, one can be transportation. Another one can be food. Another one can be, is like large animals, on and on those. There's like 17 of them, E S Fs. So an emergency operations center can look at your incident and you go, we need E S Fs 11, 12, 9, 8, 7, and they can just stand those up and help support you, right? It's really great if you have a good E O C. Lines of authority. This is kind of goofy. This is a designed to be kind of a national training. And it talks about the, and this is a big incident. So they say political authority, that's probably referring to a state declared incident. It'll go to an E O C director and then their E S F functions. And then finally to an incident commander. And that's probably true in the long run. But that's not what this fire would be, right? It's a county thing that spreads. And it kind of builds from the ground up. So it's a little different, but it's different in every state. And then M A Cs, multi-agency coordinating, coordination systems. Same thing. Cities, states, counties. The Front Range has a couple of M A Cs set up. The state has a state M A C set up so that if we have big multiple incidents, like, you know, when you had East Troublesome Fire and, and then the Cameron Peak and we had some really big stuff going at the same time and we were needing to order in national resources and state. They stood up one of the M A Cs to coordinate resource ordering, not really to run the incidents because they had incident commanders and teams, but a M A C to coordinate. That's all it is. Multi-agencies coordinating system, right? That's what it is. To just give you the logistics, the trucks, the engines, the people. That's kind of how they work. Yep, that doesn't matter much. This is pretty good. So the steps to accomplish our incident objectives, right? The activity, agency, policy, direction and support, that comes from the executives, right? That comes from you. What are the, what are the town of Carbondale's policies that you want followed here, right? It can be anything. You can say, look, we, we don't want discrimination. We don't want sexual harassment. We're going to follow our values here, right? That's a piece of it. You can also say fiscally, this is our values. We want it handled X, Y, Z, right? That's the direction you can and should give, right? And then how can we support that, right? Well, we've got streets, we've got water, we can, you know, whatever is needed. You give that as an executive to that incident command team. And then the incident objectives, like I said before, written by the incident commander. And the commander kind of gives the overall strategy to the operations section. Mike, I don't want to go in past 133 and I don't want it going past, you know, Roanoke High School, whatever, right? Our strategy is to bomb retardant around there. Let's get aircraft. Figure this out. How do we do point protection? And you figure all that out. That's the wide, broad strategy. And then they do that. Everything after that is on ops. That's the hard part. It's a hard job. Does that make sense? That's kind of how this rolls, right? And if we do it right, we'll make good decisions if we do it right. Um, but, yep. That's all kind of out of your basic I C S stuff, right? Designate tactics, select the right resources, assign those resources and then monitor how they're doing. That's true in business as well as firefighting, right? Major responsibilities of, of the executive. Again, I know this is kind of repeating, but it's important. That's why they have it in here so much. Clearly state the town's jurisdiction policy. Evaluate, this is big. Evaluate the effectiveness and correct deficiencies in what the incident commander's doing. You guys have a role in evaluating the incident commander throughout this and after. Hey, we talked about this, right? You got to do it through liaison and all that, but you end up having a meeting, believe me. That's all incident commanders do when big incidents like this, you just meet. We're not chopping and squirting. We're doing our piece, right? But you can say, look, we, we identified this. This was important to us and it's not happening. Can you tell us why? Is it impossible? Let's get this back on the road. You have that, right? And you have that duty to the people you serve.
And Chief, how much of that do we have and to Chief Wilson and Lauren and all the planning you guys have been doing as far as like, I would imagine some objectives here in this kind of incident would be like our water infrastructure, for example. And maybe some key facilities, you know, this facility, your facility, right? Things that are necessary. Like I, I can't imagine us saying like, that part of town doesn't matter, keep it on the side of the line or something like that. But it seems like there, do we have kind of a preset list of critical infrastructure that would be part of any set of objectives or is that work that we should do or is that work that you do on the spot?
I think that's work you need to do in your emergency plan and emergency planning.
Okay.
Because it makes, when you do that, when the time comes, it makes your decisions easier and more correct and rapid, right? When you've already said, hey, this is a priority, right? Water systems, communications, whatever it is. Kind of identify those at the beginning. Go ahead.
Can I jump in?
Please.
And, and just so that you're aware, we are working with the county emergency operations through Chris Bornhold and Chad Whiting. We are actually due for its mitigation work. But we identify every few years, we get back together. We take a great big map of Carbondale. We identify the critical infrastructure, everything from feral gas, XL Holy Cross, water, any of our communications, any radio towers, any cell towers, nursing homes, all of our schools and any, our roadways, our bridges, anything that assists any of the infrastructure that has to be maintained in order to provide for the safety of the community, whether it's infrastructure to get people in and out, infrastructure such as our, our radio communication towers to make sure that those are intact. Because without communication, all of this means nothing. It goes so, and it is so in-depth that we also identify where are the homes that people are on oxygen, where are the homes that people will not be able to evacuate? Now, it's not always up to date. It's not always accurate. And that's why we request assistance from the public, letting us know some of those things. But we're currently, we just started mitigation work two weeks ago, maybe.
The county wildfire protection.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
A big deal.
Thank you, Chief.
We all work with, it's really good.
So if we were to have this objective setting exercise in a real incident, our staff would bring that to the table. We would provide it to you.
Yep.
And we'd say, based on your advice, we would set objectives around protection of all.
Absolutely. It really is a team discussion. It's not like, hey, what do you want? It's, it's a, no, it's, it's a really good question. It's, it's, it's a team discussion with a lot of input from both sides.
And some things just like, you know, water infrastructure and what have you. If all your roads are blocked, then it doesn't really matter whether you stop the fire. Nobody can get out. So, you know, all of those things sort of take priority.
Yep. And that changes to a totally different strategy. I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but that goes to shelter in place and areas of refuge, which is something to plan for, right? What if it, you can't get out? Where do people shelter in place in areas of refuge? And those are all just planning, things that are done all the time. You pick them up. Part of the planning process.
A lot of it depends on what the incident is.
Yeah.
You know, we're talking about wildfires, but you know, where I came from, it made a difference if it was a hurricane or a bad winter storm that pulled down a whole bunch of trees and we couldn't get ambulance to people's houses and things, the priorities are different.
Yeah. And Kirk brought, exactly. Kirk brought up the feral gas tank, right? One of those 30,000 or 40,000 gallon tanks, springs a leak or blevies. You're talking an evacuation of a half mile to a mile radius, radius. What does that do? That's Carbondale, right? So it doesn't matter. There's all kinds of hazards that we can, we would have to deal with. Same system, same approach though. What's the evacuation out of that one, right? And what is an area of refuge out of that? That kind of thing. Planning. Okay. Talk a little bit about delegation of authority. Side of my arm. I can't tell.
You go.
Delegation of authority, those are important. We all come together, whomever the, the incident commander is, we all do a written delegation of authority. And there's templates out there. I have a couple. There are standard ones we use in wildfire and you can tweak them. There, it's not complex. It's just important because you say, okay, we're delegating you this authority, fighting the fire, doing this, doing that. Here's what we expect, right? Here's what you provide. Here's kind of what we provide. And there's just kind of a bullet point letter, but it really helps define, again, in writing, the values, the policies, the things that the executive or the town wants, right? And needs in that delegation of authority. And it's a clear for that incident commander. Okay, these are my sideboards, right? Don't spend over a million dollars without talking to us again. I'm not kidding. It can be that, right? And, and so they're really good. Not difficult to do. But we should have our templates, right? And we can do that easily as we go into the run-up to this tabletop stuff. It's limits on authority, right? You're not king, you're the incident commander, right? That's important. And then again, political, environmental and cost. Always expect and demand a briefing from that incident commander. They should be able to do that. And certain things that it needs to cover. And legit things to ask, right? What is the situation now, right? Because these briefings happen, I don't know. Maybe two times a day, maybe three, you know, depends on the situation. Has it changed jurisdiction? Has it changed boundaries? Do we need to add more? Do we need to shut this off? What are your, are your objectives? Still the incident objectives? Have, has that, as executives, have your goals, priorities changed, right? Now that the incident's changed or that now that you have new information, right? Because this is all dynamic, right? None of it's stone, right? It's stone until the next meeting. It's that kind of thing. Status of communication systems. Policy on interacting with the media. Where are we at with that? Where do we direct them? What can I say? What can't that, what shouldn't I say? You guys would want to know that, right? Hey, what can we say? Phones are blowing up. What can we say? There's stuff you can say, all right? Let's figure it out. What's not good to say? And it's, it's not complex. It's just important to have that discussion. So you can demand that, right? And then schedules for the next briefings and meetings. So I can tell people, yep, here's what it is now. But at six o'clock, we're having another briefing. I'll let you know. It's all reasonable stuff. And then evaluating that incident commander and their team. Understanding your policies, right? Did that incident commander understand what you were saying with your policy and direction? Are they proactive, right, in what they're doing? Do you think they're managing the fire well? I mean, you can be managing a fire well and the fire's not going well, right? I mean, but so, but you can see the difference, I guarantee you. Is it a good match between objectives and strategies? Please explain that to me, right? You can ask that. Do we have enough staff and organization to meet not only operational stuff, but managing this thing safely? It's like I said, you're not going to have a 56-person type one team, not for a while. And then also monitor that span of control. Really important. And those are all things you can do. And those are all things you can do, and how to get those briefings. Um, the other thing to understand about a, an incident commander and team is do they use, uh utilize deputies? Right? Say, I'm the incident commander. I, I shouldn't go twenty-four hours, much less forty. That's what we end up doing around here, because there's no one else. Um, but you shouldn't do that. And anymore, you shouldn't, it should go and say, all right, Brandon's uh deputy IC, I'm going to go sleep for four hours. Right? Or whatever, he's taking the next twelve hours, right? Does that incident commander ensure that they have deputies, that the ops chief has deputies? Because they're getting throttled, right? All that, to to keep people fresh and keep peoples, because this is about keeping people from being dead, that's really what this is about. And then protecting property, right? When you're not fresh, when you've been grinding for thirty hours, under that kind of stress and that kind of constant cortisol dump, you don't make great decisions after a while, and you don't make them quickly enough, no human does. So, that's a great tool to uh uh look at a management team and say, are they really managing their people well? That'll give you an idea of whether they're managing them well out in the field. Um, does that incident commander really delegate authority to their staff? Or are they micromanaging? That's how you can tell uh an incident commander, or a boss, you guys know this. A boss that's confident, understands what they're doing, they delegate, they talk, they hold people accountable, the ones that aren't sure, that are fearful, they're in it all, right? It's the same thing, so, all right. Um, we keep going through that. Um, I don't need to go through each one, you guys get the gist of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I want to bore you. Um, this just talks about uh multi-agency involvement. I think this is important, that we do this, that we train, we plan, we talk. Um, I applaud you for being here on another night, and it's not easy, uh listening to me drone on. Um, making sure that uh we train together and we evaluate what we do and uh do the best we can to not get people dead. That's it. I told you I'd try to blow through.
That was great.
And and I'm happy to talk about or answer questions, um, but like I said, the ICS for executives, it's a kind of a ten hour thing, but it's based on people not knowing anything about ICS and um and how how any of that runs, and so I'm really appreciative of you guys doing the work ahead of time, and you didn't have to just uh, I didn't have to go, geez, I need to tell you, right? Uh, I really appreciate that, that uh um gives me confidence in what we're doing.
Great, thanks, Chief. Um, and just so we're aware, like, I'll just open it up for questions. And is there anything else that you were going to present to us tonight, or is that, that's pretty much?
Pretty much.
Tonight, step one, great.
We can go a lot of places.
Yeah.
And, you know, Lauren and I talked, I really didn't want to do that, really, we decided, hey, let's, tonight, let's talk about the executives' functions and and the scenario, and a little bit about how this is likely to roll out. And then, you know, the next time we meet, we'll, we'll talk about uh something else, that maybe something you guys want to talk about.
Well, I think the, the idea of doing a tabletop, and after you've worked with our department heads, and we can really come in and sort of act it out, like, what would that really look like? Because I still have a hard time, like, also, there's seven of us, so we're intentionally a deliberative body that discusses things at length before making decisions. I don't know how that, well, that works in this situation, so um I'd be really interested in, what's that?
It's armor.
Yeah, yeah, I bet. Well, what questions do uh board members have or or comments? Anything you want to spend a few more minutes on?
Are there gaping holes, or or, I mean, if some, if this were to happen tomorrow, obviously, we have a little snow, so hopefully that would, that's not an issue. But, I mean, are are there gaping holes or or small holes in our in our plans or or anything at the moment that we, that we really need to make sure are prioritized? Um, yeah, question mark.
Do you want to answer any of that?
We feel pretty confident.
Uh, I could just say that, you know, this is, it's a moving target. It is always being reviewed and um manipulated for, you know, lessons learned or different um different players in the field, whether it's county emergency management, um, and, you know, where they're prioritizing things and what kind of coordination we've had with um with the fire department and with emergency management and with police chief and with myself. But I don't know that there are, I would, I wouldn't say that there are gaping holes. There's some updating that we're trying to do and trying to make sure that all the information that we have is current. Um, so that we are prepared, but there's no way, no way really to be more than about three quarters of the way prepared for any of this, um, because every situation is different. Um, including with regard to the people involved, so.
I I think one potential hole that we identified and have been working on is is the evacuation thing, right? And um I can pull something up real quick.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to think through that a little bit, just where are we with that?
Yeah.
That'd help me sleep.
Yeah, you know, jump, just.
So I know it's. Yeah, yeah, please do, this is great.
Yeah, one of the things that, and I'm sure if you want to speak to this, uh potentially, Rob, with regard to evacuation routes, is that
Thank you.
You know, having pre-planned evacuation routes only goes so far because you have to see what the situation is on the ground. Um, you absolutely don't want people thinking that, you know, this is a known evacuation route, so I'm just going to go there if they're running directly towards the danger.
And and that's really stuff we should work on um in the coming weeks and months, because I know that is something that you all feel pressure and hear from the community about, what if, what are the, you know, give me the exact evacuation route. And I've been doing it a long time, I can't do that, because um I don't know where the fire is, right? If it's coming from there, then it's this way, if it's, right? And so being able to answer that intelligently for people is important. Um, very important. So that map right there, that Kirk laid out, is a map that uh we've been working on, and then there are, oh, here we go. On top of that, with the zones, and I know this is hard to see, I'll try to.
We've got it here.
I I provided them.
Oh, you got the text too?
Yeah, the text was great.
This is important, this is a, two kind of simple looking documents, but um, a lot of work went in on those zones. Uh, Billy Gavett really did the, you know, the best. Uh, you know, this section of streets can, you know, go, I think, best that way, and uh not too big, not too small. And then the messaging that you send to the dispatch center is on that other sheet, and then they can send that out, you reach well, and um.
Everbridge, Everbridge.
Thank you.
I see where you were going with that.
Use that for help. And and so they can know if it's a pre-evac or or get out now thing, and this is an important uh uh thing to train on and get in place and let people know about, yes, uh, we are doing this. And um in that, and you can't write it down, but in that, was, you know, the the PD is likely to be uh first line in charge of evacuating. And if we have to evacuate Crystal Village, whatever it is, Kirk and his team, you know, his, his folks would be saying, okay, yeah, sections two B, three C, right? These are evacuations, uh read that text and tell them also, go north on one thirty-three to uh highway eighty-two, right? But you can't tell them that um if the fire's there, right? We we don't know yet, but that would be the the finish of that message, and people need to understand that. Um, this is really good work uh that's happening. So um I think that's a really important next step, and I do think uh Lauren and Kirk identified it a while back as, hey, we need to fill this hole. It's not a, I wouldn't call it gaping, but but with all the evacuation stuff that's happened since Lahaina, it kind of gets gaping because people are paying attention to it, so it's important. Um, this is a good first, uh good step, to go into the evacuation plan. Yeah. I don't know if that helps answer, but I know it's kind of long-winded, but um I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanted to pull that up, but I forgot, because I was yapping.
Yeah, Rob, can I jump into that as well?
Please do, go.
The other two things I would, I would keep in mind are staffing issues. Uh, no matter what, Chief Goodwin alluded to earlier, it really doesn't matter what size of event it is, whether it's a a weather event, a fire, hazmat, mass casualty, we probably just don't have enough resources, not only in town, but even potentially in the region to handle it. Uh, so along with limited resources in the area, we would, I would also say that managing expectations of of the reality of what what can happen, what what the town can assist in, our water department can only produce so much water, and then there's nothing left. Our hydrants can only uh handle, uh Chief Goodwin knows this more than I do, but uh we can't run multiple hydrants all at the same time, and everybody outside with their garden hose watering their house. Um, it just, no water system is designed for that, so I would say staffing and expectations unfortunately would be one of the the gaps.
That's a really good point, especially in initial response, right? You you call in all the mutual aid and stuff. When I described our fire district to you, I described six full-time responders at any one time. And and you'll have me and other uh staff there during the day, so it's more than that, and we'd do an all-call eventually, but that initial response, just like the PD is, however, whoever's on that duty and not sick that day on vacation. Um, you're there looking at the monster and then calling in all the resources you can and just trying to keep people alive till that happens. That's just reality. At any fire like this, I don't care if you got five hundred firefighters. Um, you know, you start popping houses, every one of those houses that burns down has water that's spewing, having been turned off at the curb, that really screws with your water system, right? So really, you're trying to keep that urban conflagration from happening or growing, right? Uh, um, we've done a little bit of game planning on it and and even talked about, well, if if this fire enters, a fire enters Crystal Village or RVR or something like that, and it's looking, you know, there's forty, fifty mile an hour winds behind it, and this is going to be just a spectacularly bad day. If we can fly aircraft, I'm putting retardant on a, on homes three, four blocks away, paint this, I don't care how many windows you break, I don't care what happens, that's probably where we're going, and that's insane, but that's the decision I would make, to try to stop that, because it only, it gets so exponentially worse when houses burn, water systems fail, on and on this, it's a more toxic scene, it's just all those things that make it worse. So really trying to hammer it early on and get people out of the way, out of the way, uh early on. And that's another thing to talk about um in the planning, that's a hole, not.
I I I, let me retract gaping, just any hole.
I'm I'm not, that is a good term, because there's a gaping hole, you gotta identify. But another potential hole is where do we tell people to go? Right? We tell them, hit one thirty-three, go to eighty-two, we need to make sure we say, go to assault, middle school? When we're in high school, whatever, you have to identify those places and then uh call the school district or whoever it is, right? And say, they're coming, fire it up, right? And um all those complexities start happening when you evacuate people, all of them. Not to mention car wrecks and other stuff. So the the gaping is okay. They become gaping quickly.
And I, it sounds like a year or more ago, this would have been a gaping hole, we didn't have this, right? This is relatively new.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a little longer, but it's great. To me, this is like really good pre-planning, and it feels like the next step, one next step might be, once we get that ReachWell system set up, to send like a test notification and start to talk about it. If you didn't get that, sign up, you know, put it in the paper, like, we gotta, we gotta get people on this, because I'm assuming that you have to register in a way that you put in your address, or it's not going to know what zone you're in.
Your phone number.
Okay.
Oh, well.
Because I'm not sure how they would know that I, where I live.
That would all be reverse nine-one-one.
Okay, okay.
Right, and ReachWell.
Okay.
Right, the text, if you read the text, it kind of describes the area, right?
Right, but I don't know how they would know where my cell phone is based, that's what I'm saying. Like, if I'm here right now. Yeah, but my home is not here.
No, it would be on ReachWell, it would only be like, um, the neighborhood, whatever, you know, if you're on Cowan Drive, North Eight Street, or whatever.
Out to the channel, it would go out to every cell phone.
Right, and it would just give where the evacuation is.
Look at it and go, oh, no, that's that's me, or that's not me, you would still get it.
Okay, you'd still get it even if you, if if you live here, but it's evacuating.
You would get it, and then the reverse nine-one-one to landlines or sell, you know, void stuff that's tied to that address, right?
Okay.
Because some people have that as well, so it would be both ways you would get that.
Okay.
Is there, is there any way, but cell phones aren't in reverse nine-one-one, right?
Some are. If that's your phone number, right? That you say, hey, I live here, what's your phone number, right? That's tied to nine-one-one, so some are.
There is, there is also a a system, iPOS, which our emergency communication center, our dispatch center has, they just draw a map of where the signal's going to go, and any wifi or Bluetooth device will receive that signal.
Interesting.
The difficulty is that there's bleed over, so someone on the front range may get it somehow. Um, but it's, it's a pretty incredible federal system. There's a lot of parameters on when it can be used, when it can't. Uh, but we do have that capability now.
That's really good, that they pull up the CAD map and just draw a polygon, send it.
What other questions the board members have this evening?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe if, that when the, in the spring rollout of the um inReach, um, maybe we do a little bit of publicity about kind of these efforts that are happening, um, but also ask people to let you know, or whoever know, if they have oxygen, or if they will have, just to make sure they're on that list, because that's really important. And I think it'll be on people's minds, um, because I would say that's when we hear from people, is when some incident has happened. Generally, it's like, do we even have a plan? And it's like, yes, we have a plan, but um, and so I think it'll help reassure folks that at least there's a plan, they can take some action now, um, and let you know if there's anything peculiar about the people in their home that would, you would need to know for evacuation purposes.
That's really good, I think you ought to toot the horn that.
I think so too.
Absolutely.
We'll get it out, and it.
People want to know eight or ten different ways. Yeah.
Tom?
Just thank you all for putting this together, really helpful, and I'm really encouraged to hear how you guys are working together on the ReachWell. I think one of the things, as you mentioned, if communications falls apart, everything falls apart. And a- as much as we can do, we've run into this before, where we don't know what's going on, and we don't have a way to reach people. And if we could figure some of that out, I'm actually even thinking of a, a test run during Mountain Fair.
Yeah.
Of, these streets are closed, folks, please don't do, I mean, do it in a a good way so that when the emergency comes, everybody's all signed up and is really comfortable using it. So I really appreciate, and I think we're really supportive of finding ways to make sure that help happens, so.
Please keep bringing that up.
Yeah, and I really like the the tabletop idea of seeing how this all works, again, when it happens is when we'll. When it happens is when we'll figure out all, but we have a lot of things in place, but I think the communication thing is just gonna be the most difficult thing. I mean, I'm relying on you guys if something happens, but if you need something from us, how do you contact us and say, please go door to door in your neighborhood and tell everybody evacuate? Or, or something like that. I don't expect to be making decisions about what you need to do. I want, I want you to be able to reach us so we can tell the larger community what, what we need to do. So um, this is, this is a great first start, so thank you.
Yeah, I like that. I, I think in a lot of cases, once it comes to an incident, there isn't much necessarily for us to do, except ideally be a good like footsler in some way of, and figuring out where we can fit in, in a sort of more subordinate way, I think is maybe more important than, we're not gonna really be making policy, hopefully we're making policy now, and then that's, we've set it up in a clear way, but we're not gonna be over, you know? How can we be useful in that situation, I guess?
Chris?
I think it's also helpful to think about like what we're not supposed to do. I like that you talked about that a little bit, um, what we're not supposed to say, who, who we're not supposed to talk to. Um, I think that reminder is really good for, for me, so that I'm not screwing things up for you. I don't wanna make anything harder for you guys. And so if there's things that you think of that you're like, oh, they probably don't know that they shouldn't do that. Um, like go, maybe going door to door is not the right thing, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
So if you think of things that we shouldn't do, that's helpful too. I wanna get out of your way.
And does this kinda stuff ultimately end up on like your website or something or hours or?
We end up in digitally uh, in your plan, your website, our website.
Yep.
Cause I do, I feel like, and going back to Erica's sort of thing about peace of mind and stuff, I think some people, myself included, kind of enjoy going down the rabbit hole and kind of, I loved knowing all about the incident command system and, and be, knowing the nitty gritty does give you a little bit more of confidence in like, in the whole thing. And I think opening up that portal to people ahead of time for them to sort of, maybe they see something on the news, they go to our website or we, we direct to your website or something and there's a page where we have some of these documents and people could go through it and, and maybe there's the same place there, they can sign up for ReachWell and they can check a box that says I have oxygen or whatever.
Yeah, and that's great. Uh, and along those lines, I, I don't know, if, once we're done with this uh, portion, right? The, the tabletop and all that and um, i- if you guys thought that a public meeting or something was, was in order, right? And we could just talk about, hey, here's where we're at, here's what we've been doing. I'm happy to uh, do my part in that and.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I'm happy to, well, you know, uh, you're the boss, I'll, I'll, I'll be there.
I was thinking like, I know that there isn't really a fire season anymore, but it, you know, it's spring, what can people be doing with spring cleaning to mitigate around their house? Um, I think it would be smart to have a meeting and invite the public, because that also gives them confidence that we're being transparent, we're communicating what's happening. Um, I think that would be helpful.
I agree, and I, and I think that might be hosted by you guys at your facility. Like, I remember you did that after one of the big fires in the last couple of years. It might have been Lahaina where people get this in understandably increased sense of alarm and urgency around it. And they wanna know there's a plan and they wanna know what they can do. Um, Christina, any questions or comments before we start to wrap up?
Um, I just like everything and I, I was gonna say thank you. Um, and one thing I noted when I was here for the Christine, I really loved how they had um, you know, uh, bilingual available, I think that's huge, you have to remember, there's 49% of our, our town is Hispanic and if, I mean, it'll, I just think of communication and chaos and if that's a big population, we have all this. But I mean, what's, how effective is that for that population? So, and I think as you invite people, we just have to really get the word out to everybody and everybody.
That's absolutely vital and that's a big reason why uh, Anna and Jenny are, are uh, working together because all of it, that'll be uh, sent bilingualy every one of those uh, pre-evacuation and evacs, right? Through um, reverse 911 and ReachWell and um, yeah. That, that's one of the big reasons for the team love. What, like the fire district, we have a uh, standalone Spanish-only website, right? We were the first ones to do it. We have our website and then one, and that's one y'all, that, cause we believe it's really important. And um, that's why I'm so happy that Jenny and Anna, uh, you guys have directed, directed that, so it, it's a big deal.
And that's one of the reasons why ReachWell is really sort of the forerunner, because you can, you can pick your language. You want it in Chinese, you're gonna get it in Chinese.
It is so good.
Yeah.
Just.
I know that during the Lake Christine fire, the Spanish-speaking radio stations were also really, really integral in making sure that um, the messaging was getting out. Because that radio seems like a really um, integral part of their culture and community. Like on, on all construction sites, you've got radio running all day long. And um, I sat on the Picken County Translator Advisory Board and they were like, the, the Spanish radio stations were all about making sure that they had an emergency plan in place and that they were on the lists and um, showing up for their community, so that's really important.
Well, it sounds like we're, we're at a good stopping point. I mean, my only last question, Chief, is just, when might we have a conversation about like mitigation efforts? I mean, it even comes to mind that we're about to update our building codes and we're gonna proceed as planned with that. But um, when, when would be a good time to talk about, like, do we need to build in more fire resilient material requirements of building code? Do we need to, what do we need to do to get people? We all have stacks of um, wood next to our houses, right? Like we've, but around town, like this town is not mitigated.
I'd say to do that next week.
Okay.
And what I would recommend is, is us uh, meeting and talking and bringing in Angie Dablin with the Royland Fort Valley Wildfire Collaborative, where we work with a lot, who can help so much with messaging and funding and all kinds of stuff. And let's have that discussion about uh, townwide community fire mitigation. Right, you can do target areas, target, these are really important area, we need to get that. We don't wanna, this is a real entry point for uh, fire into the town. You can identify those and then also uh, really help people with individual property mitigation stuff. And there's funding for that and we're starting to do uh, some of that as well with the collaborative for people, even some in RBR.
Okay.
We're ready.
Okay, that seems like work that we've never done in a coordinated way.
And it's all part of this, I think.
I wonder if it might be a cool thing to, instead of like a spring cleanup, you know how we have our situation out here? Like, how do we target that to fire mitigation and, and getting ready for that?
Do you have thoughts?
I was gonna suggest we support a spring cleanup coming up in the end of April where we collect a lot of materials. But that may be something that we're, we may wanna consider expanding to wood tiles, lumber or other materials that are identified uh, throughout town that would make it easier on homeowners differences to dispose of if it was available.
Yeah, let's.
That's something that the board has not announced.
I think we need to follow up with, and probably some staff work to, to bring us some suggestions, because I, I wanna be realistic about it. Like, I, I know that with some of these fires, like that Waldo Canyon Fire Chief that we've talked about before, that like wood fences were one of the main conduits of the fire, right? That it was just ripping down lot lines. We're not gonna get rid of all our wood fences, so how much good is it to get rid of the stuff right next to them? I don't know, like, I'd just like to be really targeted. That's not something we have to figure out right now, but, and maybe it is the Angie Dablin's group, but what should we do?
Even if you have wood fences, there are things you can uh, cut off the last 18 inches. Keep it from connecting to the house, that makes a huge difference on fire transfer.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna get rid of all of them, but people don't even know that piece.
Right.
And we can help them with that.
Okay, okay. Well, this feels like a really good start of something, not a, not a conclusion. And um, I would just say we look forward to these upcoming meetings and it's, you know, hope uh, staff can continue collaborating and, and bring us back some recommended, you know, cadence of when do we wanna work through this? I know we don't have to get through it all before this summer, um, but I think this will be an ongoing thing. And hopefully we'll kinda do a lot of work in the next six months to a year. And then maybe there's a regular meeting every year where we do a new tabletop. And then there's a community meeting where we reinforce things and that's just a regular thing that everybody expects. Great, well, thanks everybody for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thanks for the pen or paperweight or.